Okay, good evening, everybody. We're gonna get started here, so welcome to our workshop today. We have four items on our, two items on our agenda tonight. So, yes, I know it. So the first one is King County Regional Homelessness Authority. And Marina, are you gonna kick this off for us, or please? Fair enough. Like that leadership role, Marina. There we go.
Wonderful. Well, good afternoon, council. A pleasure to be before you. For the record, my name is Alexis Mercedes Rink, and I see a lot of familiar faces from my previous role. Thank you so much for this opportunity to come before you tonight and talk a bit about our progress at the King County Regional Homelessness Authority. You'll be hearing primarily from our South King County Planner, Abby. I'm actually gonna turn it over to her to introduce herself and start the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can y'all hear me okay? Great. All right. Thank you all so much for having us. As Alexis mentioned, my name's Abby Anderson. I use she or they pronouns, and I'm the South King County Subregional Planner with the Regional Homelessness Authority. You can go ahead and go to the next slide, as I want to ground us in our theory of change, which we use in all of our decision-making policies and practices. And so I'll read it out for us now, which is, if we create a homelessness response system that centers the voices of people's lived experience, then we'll be able to meet the needs and eliminate inequities in order to end homelessness for all. So we can go to the next slide. And I know that we were able to present to you all, last year Alexis was able to present to provide some background information on KCRHA, but as we are often a little bit of a confusing agency, I wanted to provide additional background on what we're doing. Oh, no, maybe this clicker works for me, too. Let's see. Okay, perfect. So, starting with a brief history and timeline. In 2018 and 2019, the National Innovation Service came out to King County and decided that, and determined that our regional approach with a centralized response system would solve the problems that they saw in our homelessness response system as it stood back then. Therefore, in 2019, the city of Seattle and King County signed an inter-local agreement, therefore forming the King County Regional Homelessness Authority. In 2020, we had a lot of roadblocks, as I'm sure many other folks did. And at the same time, the homelessness landscape and response system was also rapidly changing. So we put off hiring our CEO until April of 2021, and we just celebrated our two-year anniversary as that hiring really kicked off the Regional Homelessness Authority. And since then, we've been hiring up all the way through today. And so in 2021, what we did was started hiring a lot of folks and really looked at what it would, what would it mean to take over the homelessness response system in King County? So gathering data, combining data, and integrating that into our system and starting to think about system redesign. In 2022, we really, in earnest, started to work on system redesign. We built up our partnership for zero, which is our philanthropic response in downtown Seattle. We hired, we looked at severe weather planning and processes, and we did a lot of qualitative research out in the field, talking with folks with lived experience of homelessness. And then we started our service redesign process, which is a big tranche of work that I'm here to talk to you today about, and something that we're continuing to do in 2023, is like a system redesign and with our goal of transformative change, which our five-year plan hints at. Another way to think about what we do is to look at this handy graphic, which kind of shows the delineation of services between the city of Seattle and King County. Important things to know about what we, as the Regional Homelessness Authority, do is that we are a public funder. So one of our main things is distributing funding out to service provider organizations that are really the foundation of the homelessness response work. We also oversee the data for all of the homelessness response. So you'll see there, the acronym HMIS is the Homelessness Management Information System, and that's one way that we use to track the number of folks experiencing homelessness, how they're accessing shelter and accessing the system as a whole. We also coordinate between jurisdictions and work really closely with human services managers across all of the jurisdictions in King County. And that is another role that we take on as the Regional Homelessness Authority that is distinct from the city of Seattle and King County. Another way to think about how we are different from other governments, so we are a special jurisdiction government agency. We receive and administer public funding, as I mentioned, really distributing that out to all of the service providers. We administer programs and policies and then partner with public and private organizations. However, we are distinct and different from King County, the City of Seattle Housing Authorities, and we are an agency that cannot levy taxes. I wanna walk through some of our big wins to date and some of the progress. So in 2022, we housed more than 5,600 individuals, couples, and families. We also had over 1,000 people participate in some of our community engagements in 2022, including the Understanding Unsheltered Homelessness Project, which is what that funky acronym is, and then also through our five-year plan process, which we'll talk about a little bit more in the future. We had a 100% utilization rate for our emergency housing voucher program, which was nearly twice that of our peer communities and resulted in over 1,400 households being housed through that program. We launched our reprocurement process using an equitable procurement manual, which is one of the key functions of the Regional Homelessness Authority and the reason that a centralized response is so important to be able to look at how we can more appropriately procure services out to the community. We ensured encampment resolutions are focused on housing, and we improved coordination and effectiveness of our severe weather response, some of which is the work happening in Kent to stand up severe weather shelters when the weather gets extremely cold or extremely hot. So now I'm gonna pivot us to our five-year plan development. So this all started last summer when we began community engagement all across King County. We had several workshops in each of the seven subregions in King County. We also prepared a lot and did workshops with our system partners, which are partners such as like the carceral system, healthcare system, education systems, and things like that. And then we also had a lot of workshops and community engagement around specific subpopulations to understand their unique experience of homelessness in our region. In the fall and winter, we started content development more in earnest and made sure to keep going back out to those communities, including doing a lot of work with our South King County Human Services Planners to weigh in on this content development and provide feedback throughout the process. In January 2023, we were able to release our first draft of the plan and start a public comment period. We also, again, received feedback from city staff all across the region and also had some sessions with provider leaderships, provider leadership, so that they could understand the plan and provide feedback as well. We took all of that feedback from the public comment period and in February and March of this year engaged in restructuring the plan to be in accordance with that feedback. And right now, the plan sits with our implementation board and governing committee, and we're hopeful to have votes by each of them within, within a month by June 1st. So I'm now gonna walk us through our five-year plan as it stands in three distinct sections. The first section is our section called the Scope and Scale of the Issue, and it looks at how we can understand who is experiencing homelessness. What we know is that there are a lot of different ways to measure homelessness. You can look at statistical projections. You can use administrative data sets like that Homelessness Management Information System I mentioned before. You can also count annually, so the number of folks that are accessing the system across a period of time, like a year or a month, or in one moment in time, as you might be familiar with the point-in-time count that happens every January. All of these produce different numbers, as you can imagine, but the key message is that there is not enough temporary housing or shelter options to meet the needs of the people that are experiencing homelessness in our community. Another thing that we look at when we're understanding the scope and scale of the issue is where services are available. So I've pulled this chart for you all, where you can see the number of beds for emergency shelter. And this chart does need some description to it, which is that, of course, it's gonna be dependent on the number of people in each subregion, and of course, the number of people experiencing homelessness in each subregion that really provide the contextual information needed to interpret this chart. But you can see that there are 568 emergency shelter beds in South King County, which makes up a little over 12% of the total beds countywide. It's also important to note that we have 10 service providers that offer emergency shelter here in South King County. However, only two of those emergency shelters welcome drop-in guests, which is a critically important element to a lot of emergency shelters, to be able to have somewhere that you know you can go that evening in order to have safety and security that night. We also know it's important to understand the racial disproportionalities of people experiencing homelessness, so that we can better plan our response in accordance with these disproportionalities. So here you can see that some populations, such as American Indian, Alaskan Native, and Black or African Americans specifically, have really disproportionate rates. The sort of greenish block are the 2020 point-in-time count numbers, and the blue blocks are the 2022 point-in-time count numbers. And then those horizontal green lines represent that same population across all of King County. And so you can see for some groups where the horizontal line is below the blocks, they are just experiencing homelessness at disproportionate rates. It's important for us to understand this, so that we can better prepare our service landscape to meet these needs. Similarly, it's important to understand the healthcare needs for people experiencing homelessness. And what we saw in the 2022 point-in-time count was that 51% of folks identified as having a disability, 31 identified as having a mental health disorder, and 37 as having a substance use disorder. Again, really critical for us to understand the types of needs folks will need when accessing the system, so that we can plan more robustly to meet their unique needs. Finally, it's important for us to remember that all of the work we are doing involves people's lives. We know also that in 2022, 310 of our unhoused neighbors perished while experiencing homelessness, and so far in 2023, that number is well over 80 individuals. This is important because it reminds us of the lives of the folks that we are working with, and also reminds us of our theory of change, that we are working to involve those with lived experience, not only those that are still with us, but also those that we have lost. We wanna make sure that we're doing work that ensures that these numbers go down to zero. The second sort of tranche of work for the five-year plan looks at our current and future state that describes how the homelessness system is functioning and can function in the future. We look at this in three different levels. The first level is with our service provider organizations. This level asks us to consider the staffing, wages, and data and reporting requirements at each service provider organization, the different funding and trainings available to them, and then also looking at that a lot of folks are having increased acuity, which is to say that they're, they have very complex mental or behavioral health problems or other health issues that they're handling, which means that the service landscape is gonna have to respond appropriately. We also know, as you saw in the previous graph, that overdose deaths, overdose deaths are on the rise, meaning that we're asking a lot of our service provider organizations, and we wanna make sure that we are building up this foundational element of our homelessness response system. The second level of our current state is the network of homelessness services. This level asks us to consider how we might improve data sharing between providers, how we might improve different referral pathways, both from outreach teams getting folks in emergency shelters to transitional housing and all the way into permanent housing. It also asks us to look at the different sub-regional gaps. So where can we improve different responses across King County? Also, subpopulation gaps, ensuring that people with disproportionately impacted identities are, have access to appropriate services. It also asks us to look at the different performance of how our programs are faring as a whole and how the system operates. The third level of our current state of the homelessness response system is system-to-system connection. So again, this is looking at things like the carceral system, the child welfare system, the education system, healthcare, behavioral health systems. What we are asked to consider here is that there is a lack of collaboration and alignment between these systems now. And what we're hoping for is that we can enhance this limited connective tissue between systems, so that folks that are identified as either at risk of experiencing homelessness or already experiencing homelessness in one of the other systems is able to appropriately be referred into the homelessness response system and taken care of there. We also need to improve our data sharing and connect, and transparency. We need to ensure that we have accountability and role clarity across systems. And we also need to make sure that we're coordinating on funding sources, so that we can strategically procure funding across each system to serve those experiencing homelessness, and then also strategically use that funding effectively to, to meet the needs of folks experiencing homelessness. So that's a little bit of a glimpse into what our current system looks like. And what we've identified as the ideal system state is that every service provider has what they need to adequately hire and retrain, retain, retain, train staff and can carry out best practices when serving their clients, that all service providers are coordinated through data, so every subregion has services, and all disproportionately impacted populations are served. We also wanna ensure that at the system-to-system level, there are no missed opportunities to intercept someone before they become homeless, and that we're encouraging supportive transitions. So, the main body of work in our five-year plan is in this section, which is the how we get there. And the first thing that we've identified for how we get there is this one overall goal in our five-year plan, which says to bring unsheltered people inside as quickly as possible to prevent death and further harm. This not only reiterates our mission as the King County Regional Homelessness Authority, but also emphasizes the urgency behind the work that we are doing in these five years. We will measure our success towards this one overall goal through these several metrics that are all working towards the overall goal of really housing people and ensuring that we are tracking how our system is performing. So these look at the number of households accessing, entering, and exiting the homelessness response system, the number of households returning to homelessness after a given amount of time, and then the number of units available throughout the system. We also know, again, that the experience of homelessness is very unique to each individual and household. So where possible, hoping to break that down by household type, race and ethnicity, and then program type, which is to say things such as emergency shelter versus transitional housing would be two distinct program types. So we hope to achieve this, that one overall goal through a series of actions. I believe there are 76 actions as it stands now. Here's just a glimpse at the first three that are on this year's one-to-two table. So this is just a snapshot of the plan. The actions are listed there on the left, and then the column next to it is the topic area that sort of describes which tranche of work we are talking about. And then there's an impact column, which explains to anyone who's reading our plan how they might be able to see the impact of that activity. And the end of each impact statement draws back to those metrics that you saw on the last slide, so that you can also be able to see on our website and track with us how we're, how our work is impacting the homelessness response system. And then we have a final column that's simply stating whether or not this is already in motion, and recognition that a lot of these things are already kind of happening within KCRHA. We will have a similar table for years three through five of our plan. And then we also have a third table that identifies our go-first strategies for new funding, if and when we are able to identify those additional funding. You can see in that section where we will be able to put that additional, those additional dollars. So now I'd like to pivot us to our South King County Subregional Implementation Plan, which is kind of the related but second piece of work I would like to speak with you all tonight about. This subregional implementation plan simply asks the question, what does it mean to implement and act on the five-year plan in South King County? So this subregional plan will have six key components. We'll have a landscape of services. We'll have sort of a landscape of the level of investment and funding into the homelessness response system. We'll have information on the unique lived experience in each subregion. And then we also have information on the gaps in need informed by those first three sections. But importantly for us tonight, we are going to also have action steps and timelines associated with each of those activities from the five-year plan. So, from the five-year plan, as I mentioned before, we have about 76 activities. Some of those activities are going to be things that are housed within KCRHA, because they need to be standardized or centralized across the entire homelessness response system within King County. And then some of them are simply KCRHA administrative tasks that make sense to stay in-house. However, we've identified 30 of those activities that need to be tailored to each subregion. And the identification of these 30 activities was done in partnership with many folks in the South King County community, including city human services staff. And these 30 activities really need to be specific to South King in order to be most successfully implemented. So for each of these 30 activities, we will identify and develop action steps and timelines, again, in partnership with South King community. And I have an example of this in just a couple of slides, so hang tight. So the subject matter working groups that we've identified will be tasked with doing exactly what I just said, identifying and developing action steps and timelines for each of these activities. Currently, we've identified over 230 individuals to be a part of these subject matter working groups, and each of them will work on targeted initiatives that relate to each subject matter. So by way of an example, I've pulled out this activity, which has been identified to be tailored to South King County, and it involves our Ombud's Office. Our Ombud's Office is an existing department within the King County Regional Homelessness Authority that's charged with oversight and accountability of the entire homelessness response system. So a lot of the tasks for the Ombud's Office, as you can imagine, are more administrative tasks and need to be standardized across the system. However, this one that I've pulled out should be tailored to each subregion, and it says, "To deploy an effective communication strategy to ensure the Ombud's Office is well-known and easily accessible, including the creation of contact mechanisms." So, this was identified, again, in collaboration with community to be tailored. And I have an example here. The work here has not begun, but I've just thrown together an example so that hopefully you all can have a better visualization of what the subregional implementation plan will look like. So, one example might be to educate the South King community on what the Ombud's Office does, identify stakeholders that are appropriate to convene, and then develop the strategy. We might deploy that strategy beginning January of 2025, and then set a goal for ourselves to review and enhance the strategy one year later in 2026. So that's a bit of an example of what you might expect for each of those 30 activities from the five-year plan that will be tailored for South King County in the subregional plan. My last slide here is actually just some guiding questions for you all, because I wanna make sure that we have robust buy-in from all of the councils, and that I know you all have connections and feedback and input that will be important to these plans. So I'm hoping that either tonight, or also I'm happy to accept these via email, because I know I've thrown a lot of information at you in this short amount of time. But these are just some guiding questions, as we would, would love to get your feedback and input on the plan. But I'll pause there and take any questions on the presentation as a whole before diving into that.
First of all, this is an excellent presentation. I mean, you did a good job of outlining your overall goal, your mission, your metrics, and you talk about your ability to track from year to year. So I mean, this really solid. Of course, I need time to kinda go through it, but I like the way you guys lay this out, 'cause it makes sense, right? So, really good. So, that's my comment for now. I was, my councilmen have a lot to say here, and we'll start off with Councilman Metropnner.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you very much for sharing all this information. About partway through, you had a slide that talked about who is experiencing homelessness, and it was, I think, 51% said they have a disability, 31% were mental health, 37 were substance abuse. How do you come up with those numbers? And when you, you know, do you have the ability to break it down to say, you know, like Auburn, Kent, Seattle? Where do these numbers fit in? Because I would think they might be different for each area, and how did you come up with them?
Yeah, thanks for the question. Those numbers are from folks that are responding to the point-in-time count from last year, so the point-in-time count's a requirement by HUD. We're required to do it every, an unsheltered point-in-time count every other year. And the point-in-time count asks certain questions, such as, do you identify as having a disability, mental health disorder, substance use disorder? So that is where those numbers have come from. So specifically asking folks both experiencing unsheltered and sheltered homelessness. I believe we might be able to get it broken down by subregion, but I'm not sure if we'd be able to get it broken down by city. No? Alexis is saying no.
Not by city.
Okay.
By subregion is something that we are looking to include also within the subregional implementation. implementation plans. We conducted about over 500 interviews, actually, with folks and gathered these lived experience narratives where folks talked about their life conditions, and we had a couple of hubs set up in South King County, so we have South King County perspectives represented as well. And part of what we want to include in those subregional implementation plans is exactly drawing out those narratives specific to South King County.
Hey, Councilmember Michelle followed by Fincher.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you for this presentation, Abby. My first question, I'll give you the easy one. So you mentioned subject matter working groups. Do we have anyone from Kent representing Kent in those groups?
Oh, yes, absolutely. So there, like I said, there's over 230 folks already identified, and we have, you know, all of the human services planners from each city are one of those 230 folks, and then there's lots of other folks from Pier Kent represented, folks from Kent Hope represented, and lots of others that I'm sure I can't think of at this time. But the other thing that I would love to hear from you all is if you have folks that you think we might have missed, or it's just that you want to make sure that we have on our list to identify and really work on the content development with them. So if you have anyone in mind, we'd be very open to that.
Okay. I think that we probably do. We have some grassroots organizations here that may not be, like, official, but they do work with our homeless population, so I think we definitely need to include them in on the conversations. And then my second question is, you stated that the main goal of your organization is distributing funds to service providers. Is that throughout the entire King County, and then also, how is that going?
Yeah, so I would say it's more one of our main tasks that we've been tasked with when forming the Regional Homelessness Authority, is taking over those contracts from the city of Seattle and King County. However, we do a lot of other functions, including planning, working with jurisdictions, ensuring that we have coordinated entry system working, that we have the accountability and oversight through the Ombud's Office, and then building up smaller service provider organizations. So it is one of our main functions, but not the only main goal that we have. And then to answer your question on how it's going, it is countywide. So a lot of the contracts and service providers that were previously working or receiving funds from King County are still. And then we also have dollars from the state of Washington and from HUD. And so all of those dollars would be also available for everyone countywide.
And are those organizations receiving funding in a timely manner?
As we're stepping into really setting up our administrative functions, we have had some delays in trying to get contracts processed, and it's something that we are keenly focused on as an agency, of fixing immediately, as we recognize that any pauses in contracting and funds rolling out definitely impacts service providers. However, we have found that through the consolidation of our organization, there are less physical contracts that agencies need to specifically manage, as in the previous system, they might have held multiple contracts with both city of Seattle and King County, and had different reporting requirements associated with them. But that's something we're keenly focused on being able to address in the immediate term.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Fincher.
Thank you very much, Council President. So you mentioned that there's not enough temporary housing and shelter options, that there are 568 beds in the south end. Are those inhabitable beds where somebody could sleep in tonight? Or is that total with the new buildings that are built, or that were purchased by the county?
That's actually an outdated number, so the number would be higher now. That was a number from when we did our, what we call the housing inventory count last year. So we are working on getting updated numbers for this year. But yes, it is certainly, all of those beds would be inhabitable tonight. But as we mentioned, only two of them are drop-in centers, and so the other eight service providers are requiring some kind of intake form or something like that, that would require them to be able to take those beds tonight.
And do you guys have an average number for the people who are not at the drop-in? Like, is there an average length of time that it takes from somebody to apply and then get into housing, excluding the drop-in, the two and the other drop-in centers? And specifically for the south end, for our area?
Right, yeah. So those, again, were just emergency shelter beds, and so a lot of folks are not staying at emergency shelters very long, but we can work on getting some data that describes sort of the average length of stay in each different service type. Yeah, we can get that for you.
Then I've heard from providers also that there's a problem where mixing, one of the things that you try to do is to match up the type of need of housing for the person. You mentioned that increased acuity. So, you know, I know that there's problems, for instance, putting a person with mental health needs and a person that is not staff for that. How are you guys addressing that?
Absolutely. That's a fantastic question, and something that we, as an agency, are keenly focused on, and part of the reason why we are taking so many strides and efforts to understand our unhoused neighbors and what they may be experiencing in their life conditions, is so we are able to appropriately plan for services that may have more enhanced services to support the whole person. Because we definitely do not want to put somebody who may have high behavioral health needs in a setting where they might not be supported and might not be successful in maintaining that housing. And so being able to have an understanding and then be able to put forward in the plan increasing wraparound supports and adjusting our portfolio to ensure that our programs do have those wraparound supports is something that we are really focused on doing.
And then my last question is, again, in talking to some of the providers, realizing there's not enough beds, it seems to be, or there's a belief that there are people being placed in South King County that are not necessarily from South King County. So my understanding in previous conversations is that people are offered a place to stay, and they have a voice in that. But for instance, the 70-some-year-old woman living in a tent on the sidewalk seems to be, you know, have pretty high needs, met in a number of categories, but doesn't seem to be ranked high enough. So are you guys addressing those type of needs? What are you doing for those type of needs?
Absolutely. I appreciate that question a lot, because we definitely, in our processes, such as with coordinated entry, take into account local preference and trying to keep folks within home community. So my immediate question to that, in this particular case, is seeing, has that individual received a coordinated entry assessment? Which organization are they connected to? And are they just formally in the process, or do we still need to have that coordinated entry assessment? Particularly with how coordinated entry does prioritization, we do look for things exactly like that, folks who may be older or medically fragile, as well as looking at just other life conditions. And so definitely, my first question to that would be better understanding which service provider has contacted and has been working with that person, and do they have the tools to be able to just navigate also coordinated entry?
In this one, they are working with coordinated entry. I said "last question," so for now, that is the last question.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Lummer.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for making the trip down here to do this presentation. Curious about the, you talked about the 30 activities that are specific to the subregions, and you talked about the, you showed the one example of the ombudsman, but that looks like it wasn't going to potentially be in effect until January 2025. Are you prioritizing the different activities on that plan? Because it would seem to me promoting an ombudsman office is a much lower priority than some more action-oriented activities, like, you know? And so frankly, I would like to see some prioritization if you're not, because January 2025 is a long time away, if you're 77 years old, living in a tent, so.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you for that. We will, like I said, be developing all of those action steps and timelines in community, and so they definitely will be sequenced and appropriately sequenced based on what we hear from the community, which I'm sure will be an increased urgency in building up more services. So that was simply just an example to show, like, how we are thinking about action steps and timelines, but certainly not anything concrete at this point. But yes, we are planning on sequencing.
Thank you.
Mayor Ralph, you have a question?
Thank you, Council President. As you are working with providers who are citing facilities, that kind of thing, what is your requirement for those providers to do community outreach? What is the homelessness authority's plan or philosophy on community outreach for citing?
Do you mean community outreach to folks experiencing homelessness, or outreach to other community businesses?
Other community, when you're citing a facility.
Yeah, that's a great question. We are very dedicated to community outreach. As you saw, we've talked to over 1,000 people last year just doing our community engagements. And so it's really a matter of who's the best fit to be reaching out to this community. As I know, we've worked together on talking about some community outreach as well. And so, you know, we are often able to provide a lot of information and education on the homelessness response system, the experience of homelessness, and so are happy to do that. But sometimes it might be more meaningful coming from someone internally inside Kent or whatever community they're coming with. So there's not really one prescriptive answer for community outreach. We want to make sure that we are appropriately engaging communities so that they understand the services and how it might be overall beneficial for the community.
Follow-up to that, do you have any sort of requirement for organizations you're funding that are, say, placing people in a hotel in a community or something like that, to let the surrounding neighbors be a part of that citing conversation, or simply for awareness for jurisdictions?
Absolutely, I'll take that one. And so with that, something interesting about kind of what we were talking about with our contracts, we have not done a full reprocurement. We've had primarily a contract rollover with our service providers. So all those contracts with King County, city of Seattle, the terms have largely stayed the same because we haven't set new standards. Now, we are moving towards reprocuring the system, in which we will be taking up and evaluating, you know, what are expectations of service providers, including things such as that. But in the interim, I know something, and how our team operates, when we hear of something coming on board, our first step is to work with the jurisdiction and make sure that we're aligning with whatever community engagement plan and deferring to the jurisdiction on what feels appropriate.
Councilmember Troutner, you have a question there?
Thank you, Council President. Just a couple more things. And I know we've worked closely, because I'm one of the contacts on the severe weather shelter, and we've definitely seen challenges in that effort. So I want to thank you for continuing to give us the flexibility. I know very often in our community, it's hard to find a facility, and we're often putting stuff together very quickly on very short notice. Staff is always an issue, making sure we have supplies and we have a safe space for people. You know, and something else to consider, and we're seeing more and more, is issues with heat and issues with smoke, and how we're going to address that. I know we've opened up some of our spaces here in Kent, but very often, we see very few people utilizing those. So working together to find an appropriate response to serve those needs in our jurisdiction is very important. Thank you.
Councilmember Michelle.
Thank you, Council President. Yes, I will follow up with what Councilmember Troutner just said first, and bring us back to the feedback for the implementation plans. So it appears that we are going to be in the subregion of South King County. That incorporates a lot of different cities. So I would just ask that you, anything that is a plan, needs to be flexible and responsive to various jurisdictions, so it needs to be a little bit more open-ended, because we need to have that flexibility. Auburn is different from Kent, is different from Front Row Way, we have different staff capacity, we have different priorities. So I just ask that it be open-ended. And then going back to what Madam Mayor stated, I would hope that somewhere, I don't know where it belongs, whether in the contracts or whether it's your responsibility, there needs to be something, some sort of requirement on communication with the public and the jurisdictions, especially for citing different facilities. Thank you.
Councilmember Fincher.
Thank you. Is there a report or something that we can get? My concern is that people from Seattle, Seattle numbers are looking great, reducing homelessness, yet a lot of, we know that some of those people are being placed out here in the south end, still realizing they get a chance. Our south end people are still waiting. And so is there, are there numbers that we can get that shows still keeping their privacy, but shows where the applicant applied from and where they're being placed?
We have some indicators right now in HMIS, where, pardon me, Homelessness Management Information System, that do ask around city of last residence. This is, there's a lot behind that number, as some folks may mark a certain city based on where they last received services, but that is one indicating point that we can look to, and something that our team is starting to get regular report-outs on, and we can follow up with some numbers related to that. As we are moving towards some of the data improvements that are listed out in the five-year plan, we want to move to a by-name list model, where we're much more closely looking at and following an individual and developing kind of a file and understanding of where they're accessing services, so we are able to better understand their own geographic journey. Because we know folks will bounce around to access services that they may need, and that could take them over to the east side, it could take them into Seattle. But we also know folks primarily want to stay in home community, where they have their stabilizing connections. And so that is a lengthy answer for saying, it's something we're working on, we have some early indicators, and we're developing subregional dashboards that will be available on our website, hopefully by the end of this year, if not early next year, that we'll be able to show more regular report-outs. So we do want to be able to track how we're making progress addressing homelessness in each subregion.
Last question. So someone is placed, they're not placed in supported housing with all of the services, but they've been out for two years or whatever, and they could use some sort of extended service, maybe six months of counseling. Is that something that you guys would take care of, or you place them in a facility that would have something like that? So that they can hopefully lengthen the time that they are housed? So, do you understand what I'm saying?
I'm sorry, I just want to make sure, a little bit, if you can speak more on the type of service and program that they're in, that'd be helpful.
I'm thinking mainly counseling. Sometimes people who've been out a long time have a hard time going back into housing. You know, where I'd be exciting, I would think at least, I would be excited to get back to housing. There's a lot of trepidation for some people going back in, and then six months later, they're back out on the street, where if they would have had supports, even though they don't need everything in a fully-supported unit, they would have had some sort of extended support, it could have helped them stay housed.
Absolutely.
So I'm wondering, is that something from your end, or do you simply get them in a facility, then it's up to them to find the service that they would need?
Absolutely. Thank you so much for clarifying that piece, because I think it really underscores something important that we've learned in our work, the importance of moving beyond just getting folks into a housing placement, but supporting them throughout so they can maintain that housing. The short answer is, it depends on the program model. We do want to be able to appropriately plan for, and when we do reprocure, ensuring that we have providers that are working with individuals beyond just the housing placement and through their housing. And can definitely provide follow-up information related to what kind of programs do have more long-term supports associated with them. Thank you.
A lot of questions, huh? Hey, a great presentation. So this is a contact here, we have more information, we can email those three different email addresses there. Then also, go to the previous page, I think I got a couple of questions on the previous page, I thought it was. Can we back up one?
Oh, sorry. Here we go.
Yeah, so maybe, Councilmember, we got a copy this year, and then if we need a follow-up, we can continue on with this here. I think as far as staying involved and coming back, I think for me, maybe another five or six months. It'd be nice to have you guys come back and just provide us with some status and make sure we stay connected and so on. Sounds good?
Sounds great.
Fantastic.
Hey, Councilmember, are we good? Any more questions? Okay. Hey, thanks a lot, and nice seeing you again as well, too. All right, take care, guys. Thank you so much. Okay, we have Washtot update SR167 master plan. Was this the group that got stuck on 167? Think it was late?
And we're here on time. We're stuck. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council President, Councilmembers. Rob Brown, Public Works. I'm here to introduce a couple of our colleagues from Washtot, Washington State Department of Transportation tonight, to give us some updates on the SR167 master plan, which is something that we've been working with the state and our neighbors on the 167 corridor on for about two years. And so we have April Delchamps, who you're all familiar with.
I see a familiar face.
Oh, yeah.
So she's here to give us an update. And then on a larger regional context, we have Scott Barrett Hansen from the I-405 SR167 program, to give us an overall update on their program. For that, I'll turn it over to April. Thank you.
Hello. How is everyone? It's a pleasure to see familiar faces, for me as well, and a present person. I don't get to do that as much anymore. So again, it's a pleasure to be here. I am April Delchamps, as you know, but for the public, and I am a manager with Managed Mobility, and we are tasked with doing all plating functions for Washtot for King and Snohomish County. There it goes. So as Rob alluded to, I'm going to give you an update on the state route 167 master plan, and then we're going to follow this up with an update from Barrett on the larger I-405 state route 167 program. And lots of time at the end for questions. So first up, kudos to you, Mayor Ralph, as well as many others around the region for securing funding for this, separate from the legislative. It was a $2.88 million allocation to get this update, and this brings the 167 corridor plan up to the same level as the 405 master plan, so now this is at a master plan level. A couple of things on the study direction. It directed us to look at existing and future conditions, to incorporate information from the public, as well as our stakeholders, apply Washtot's practical solution, which looks at the right investment at the right time. at the right investment at the right time, and then identify near, medium, and long-term multimodal needs. And this will wrap up on June 30th of this year. So kind of to orient you on this, we did this master plan as a planning and environmental linkages study, or APEL. The intent of APEL is to more easily bring projects into NEPA and SEPA so that you can more easily and more quickly deliver projects. So we are in the very last phase with the final report that is due to the legislature on June 30th. But to kind of walk you through our process, we've been meeting for nearly two years at this point with different partners as well as agencies and community-based organizations. Our initial outreach was really to do study planning, and really at the heart of it, it was about listening, trying to understand what the needs of the corridor are, what are the transportation challenges, what are the things that are important, what are the priorities as we start going through this. Our Phase Two was a bit of a data piece, as is essential for all these types of projects, looking at existing and future conditions, existing to understand what does the data say about multimodal travel as it stands now, and the future conditions, what would it look like if we did nothing? For Phase Three, we started developing and screening strategies. It was important that we started with local planning. So we pulled projects from comprehensive plans as well as transportation improvement programs for agencies within the study region. And then we worked with our agency partners, community-based organizations, as well as Washtot subject matter experts in order to develop projects that really addressed the concerns and priorities we heard. From there, we did a scenario development process in Phase Four where we did different groupings of projects through two scenario processes to start understanding what groupings of projects do the most to move the needle on our goals and the vision for the 167 corridor. And finally, wrapping it up with that final report. And then off to the right, you'll see implementation plan. That is the next step. That is how we start getting to delivering and putting a shovel in the ground to delivering this vision. But currently, that's unfunded, but we are working on that. So a little bit of insight on how we developed and we engaged. One important piece, one of the things that was really important is that we did things centered with equity. So usually in a traditional process, you have a policy advisory committee, which is mayors, elected officials, a technical advisory committee made up of public works directors, planners. But in this case, we added what's called an equity advisory committee. And what we did for that is we really contacted CBOs that serve communities in the South King County area and North Pierce, and we invited them into the process to help us understand what those needs are, to help us make informed decisions on important projects or priority locations. And all of this really fed, was fed by community engagement. And we did events, we did equity-focused outreach, and I'll talk a bit about that later. And this rolls up into the Washtot Oversight Committee, and eventually we'll be sending this report to the legislature. So one thing I had mentioned, I thought this was important to at least kind of show you where we're at, we really wanted to center this process to make sure we were hearing the voices of those that are underserved and from vulnerable populations. And so we did a data-driven and partner-refined process as we were going through this. We used our community profile, which was based on census data as well as other data we could get a hold of, to make sure that we're contacting and talking to community-based organizations that represent the community that's down here. And then we had listening sessions to share what our process was and invite them into it. And we had some that, the line to the, on the right side of the screen that agreed to participate. It was really to try to understand the population's, the environmental justice, as well as some transportation initiatives. So this is our final study area. I know it's hard to see. I have not been able to get it updated to gray where I can see it as well. But one of the things that I wanted to highlight is we really followed a data-informed and partner-refined process. The data can't tell us everything. It really is important to ground truth, to understand what's happening at the ground level. An example of this is actually our study area from the very beginning. We used streetlight data to understand where 50% of the trips were ending and starting. And then we went to different committees as well as our CBO partners to understand what did we miss. And during that, one of the things that came up is that we had left the Port of Tacoma out because it doesn't really clearly show as going all that far. So we added that. We also added C-TAC based on feedback. Another piece that was important as we were looking through this, as we're looking at environmental justice, it's important to look at just proportionate impact and benefits. So we really needed to understand where vulnerable populations and overburdened communities live. So we did a review of census data as well as other data we were able to get a hold of, and we put it in here. And we tried to understand where is there a proportionate greater amount of equity populations? And then we went to the Equity Advisory Committee, and we asked them, what did we miss? What are the areas that didn't show up on here but you know there's pockets of equity populations? And then we further asked, you'll see the dots, which are the community identified destinations. Those are places that they either trying to get to or they consider an important destination. A bit of our process, it was important that we engage with our partners in the community throughout this and really build together this partnership that'll continue on past this planning phase. So we developed divisions, the goals, which is the purpose that are supported by the needs, the metrics where we start to understand how we're doing, if we're reaching the goals, the scenarios where we're looking at groupings, what projects are doing the most to move the needle on those goals. And then finally, to that study recommendation. Just a quick plug on this, I won't read it, it is long. I know the general practice to have it short, but there is a lot of things going on in South King County and Pierce County, and it was important to really capture all of the elements and all of those things that really do compete. And then finally, these are the master plan goals that are nested underneath that. The vision is where we're trying to go, the goals is how we're going to get there, and the metrics are how we measure what we did. One important note is that we worked with the Technical Advisory Committee, the Equity Advisory Committee, as well as the Policy Advisory Committee on this so that we can start building concurrence on what we're trying to do here. Just a couple of pieces here, just to go through, we did start with a baseline or funded projects. This was important to understand what are the projects already in the pipeline that are funded or reasonably expected to be funded so that we could have a sense of where is the already investment, and we can start building on that investment. And finally, our final study recommendation. It is about $5.5 billion to $6 billion over the course of a pretty long timeframe. And it really, as you can see kind of with the icons, each one is a combination, supports different months, different sets of goals. No one single project advances all the goals, but in compilation, we start moving the needle on all of them. And I wanted to go over a couple of projects that I thought were important, but I have the full list here, so I'm happy to dive in if you have any questions and see if a project. So a couple of projects that I think might be important to Kent are looking at having a second express toll lane on 167 from 405 all the way to the 167 completion, completing that 167-18 interchange that was pretty much across the board, heard from community-based organizations, from partners, and many others in the public, and that's to add those two missing ramps, as well as rebuild a ramp that is super tight for freight to go around. Another one is northbound 167 and auxiliary lane from 277th to 516, looking to improve the interchange of 84th and Central. This is about trying to move trucks and active transportation that need to exist there but are difficult to both accommodate in a single space. A Kent direct access ramp, this would facilitate cars that are using that express toll lane as well as a proposed bus rapid transit on 167 that would look similar to the 405 bus rapid transit that's going in now. The 167-516-181 interchange, it's looking at adding complete streets to make it easier to access under that interchange. And then I'd already mentioned the bus rapid transit. Another piece that is important to mention is this is a multimodal plan, and as part of that, one of the things that we wanted to try to advance is we have programmatic buckets for bicycle and pedestrian improvements. We do have some Kent projects that are listed because the planning had already been done, so we could point to it as something that is eligible for funding. But there's more room there. There's extra money in that pot in order to make sure that as other agencies come online with planning efforts, that they're not lost out because they didn't have something adopted right now. Additionally, one additional add is all of those blue lines are transit. Those all came from the Metro Connects Long Range Plan, and those are all ones that we are hoping to form partnership to start delivering. One of the things we heard consistently from our community-based organizations in our, from our Equity Advisory Committee, is the need for more transit service and the need for more transit service that serves them. So it has longer times, weekends, aren't so far apart that you can connect to things that they need to get to. Couple of engagement by the numbers, just to share with you. We reached over 1,000 community members last summer during an outreach event. We had almost, just over 11,500 visitors to two online open houses, one of which just closed on April 15th. We had over 2,700 surveys filled out. And one important piece is we publish everything that's online, all materials that online open houses, in seven languages, which includes English, so six extra languages. This is really done with that data-based approach. There is a lot of diversity in language, so we wanted to make sure those languages that have a high proportion in the study area, we translated all materials. Additional, another piece that we did in order to make sure we're hearing from equity communities, we did specific co-creation workshops with different CBO partners to start hearing feedback from the citizens and the residents that they serve. These are some of our summer events. We were at Kent Cornucopia Days, which is super fun. I've never tabled a event there. Hopefully, I'll be back soon. And then just a review of the co-creation workshops, we had five of them, including one in Kent. All of them, except one, required translation services in order to interact and get that feedback. We really leaned in to understand what are your transportation challenges and how do you want us to solve them? One interesting piece is we had a dialogue with a translator, and we were trying to understand, because they kept saying they wanted a bike lane on 167. We're like, I don't know if that's going to work. Let's keep, let's keep asking this. And so we go through, and what they really wanted is a trail, similar to what you see some on the East Side, something that is separated and safe that they can use as travel and not as recreation. These is a little bit of detail from those online open houses. The first one really is providing awareness and had a pretty long survey to understand what those transportation challenges or priorities. We used a lot of that feedback in developing the recommendation as well as the scenarios that preceded them. And our last outreach was really sharing how we incorporated that, their feedback from the last online open house into the recommendation, provided an overview. It was a lot of information, so going forward, we'll probably need to do it more extended outreach more often, so it's not so overwhelming. Couple of next steps as we're looking through, we have our Technical Advisory Committee tomorrow. This is our last one, where we're going to be going over the report and listening to any questions and really starting to look towards the future of implementation as we start delivering these projects. A couple of next steps I thought were important, we did share that draft report with the Technical Advisory Committee, the Policy Advisor Committee, and the Equity Advisor Committee about a week ago. And then one important piece for the APEL, as well as just keeping this momentum going forward, is supporting, looking at documenting our partner's support for the recommendation. So as we're seeking funding for the implementation for projects as they are prioritized, we have a history of coordinating that really will help us be funded. And lastly, looking at that implementation plan, it is unfunded. That does not mean that we're not working on it. We are working on what we can accomplish between now and when planning phase ends on June 30th, and then looking at working, continue to work with each other and with our partners between now and we get the full funding for the implementation. And with that, I am going to quickly turn it over to Barrett to give a quick update on the larger 167, no, I'm sorry, keep doing it backwards, I-405 state route 167 program. And then... Honestly, my issue is everything has to be in order. One comes before four. Like, it's not anything else.
I become a comfort for us.
That is true, but we're not, we're talking on numbers.
All right, thank you, April. So as you said, my name is Barrett Hansen. I'm the 167-405 Director of Design. So it was great to be with you, be here with you tonight, really as we begin building off of that vision that April talked about with the 167 master plan and can start our transition towards project delivery. So the 405-167 corridor program really is an important corridor to our region and our state, really forms a north-south alternative to I-5, moving people, goods, services through the Puget Sound region. When complete, the corridor will provide 50 miles of reliable managed lane system that provides a choice when people need to use it the most. And as you see, the 405 master plan and the 167 corridor plan really were foundational documents that have guided the project delivery to date, and with the 167 master plan, that really is building on that foundation and will provide a roadmap for addressing the needs of the communities along 167 while integrating into that 50-mile transportation system. The main purpose of our program really is to deliver on a comprehensive strategy guided by those foundational documents to improve mobility, provide multimodal and safe choices, accommodate planned regional growth, and enhance the quality of life for the environment and the communities, for the quarters of the communities we serve. So we're fortunate to have a robust history, a history of robust regional support through our executive advisory group for the program. And in 2010, that EAG adopted an implementation strategy, which really was the first step towards obtaining funding for a 10-year investment plan to bring a 40-mile managed lane system to the East Side with the expansion of the hot lane system at that point. And with the endorsement of that plan, funding to implement that 10-year vision was followed, which we are currently delivering on. With the completion of the 167 master plan on the horizon, the EAG's role remains critical in implementing the partner-driven vision for the corridor. While, like April said, we don't have dollars necessary from the legislature to move forward, we'll see ahead with that implementation, we only want to keep that momentum from the master plan going, and this is where that continued collaboration between partners will be important in requesting and securing the funding needed for the full implementation. With the adoption of the 167 master plan along with the 405 master plan, the East Side will now have a multimodal vision for the 50-plus mile corridor, which will include dual managed lane, dual managed lane system, new direct accesses and interchange to complement that managed lane system, non-motorized improvements, and high-capacity transit. And this adopted vision really is that first step in developing a strategy for funding and delivering on those improvements. And we talked about some of the future, we did want to give an update on some of the current projects that we are delivering on. The first one we want to talk, to give an update on was our 167 SR 410-18 northbound congestion management project, as I'm sure many are aware. We opened that HOV lane last August, which really added new, a new nine miles of HOV lane on 167, beginning near 410 and extending to the existing hot lane near Auburn. And while we're pleased that commuters are utilizing this new lane, and it's an important piece of the corridor, it's important to remember, it is just a piece, and we're talking about much more in additional pieces that need, really need to be implemented along The next project we wanted to give a quick update on was our SR 167 corridor improvement projects. This was a project that's funded by Toll Revenue and Move Ahead Washington, and is the next major project that will be out there under construction. The project will add strategic capacity to, with the southbound auxiliary lane between SR 516 and 277th. The project will add the toll equipment to the new northbound HOV lane that we just opened, as well as upgrade the existing toll system on 167 to include photo tolling and destination pricing to help us better manage all those trips that are using the express toll lanes. The contract for this project is anticipated to be awarded this summer and would open to traffic in 2025. Another project that was funded with some of the reinvestment of the toll dollars into the corridor was our SR 167, SR 410, and SR 18 southbound congestion management project, and this was really the companion project to the northbound improvement that we just added, or just opened. This will add and extend the express toll lane system about six miles down between Pacific all the way down to the SR 410-512 interchange area. We're planning to begin this point of design later this year and would open it to traffic in 2028. With this project, we'll have completed nearly the 50-mile managed lane system along 405 and 167. And that timing for the opening of this project also would align with the opening of the Puget Sound Gateway SR 167 project. And finally, we did want to move kind of north onto 405 and get a quick update on our 405 Renton to Bellevue widening project, so our teams, construction teams continue to make progress and deliver on the critical project to bring multimodal transportation and safety improvements to the corridor. And we like to talk about this just because about 30 to 40% of the traffic that comes from 167 moves north onto 405 into Renton in this area. And this project will really provide the missing link to connect the two systems of the 167 express hot lanes and the 405 express toll lanes. So you'll continue to see a good amount of construction this summer until next year as well. And whilst today's presentation was really focused on some of those key, those couple key projects that are more important to the 160 program, 167 corridor, we do have a lot of active and upcoming projects throughout the of active and upcoming projects throughout the 50 miles that we weren't able to talk about tonight. We didn't get a chance to talk about them, but they are vital to our continued improvements on the 167-405 corridor. And with that, we wanted to thank you for your time today. We especially appreciate all that you've been involved with our program over the years, especially to Mayor Ralph for her continued involvement in our EAG. And we look forward to seeing a few of you at our inter-agency working group on May 10th, and our executive advisory group on May 24th. And with that, April and I are happy to take some questions.
Thank you, Barrett. Thank you, April. Great presentation. While improving, you can see some of the improvements taking place today, so even got a ways to go, but heading in the right direction here. Let's, Mayor Ray, I'll let you go first, straight, please.
Thank you, Council President. Just want to say thank you, the work that's being done on both of these projects. The 405-167 is sort of where it started. That was our reasoning behind wanting a specifically 167 master plan. If something is not planned for it, it's not funded, therefore, it is never built. So that was really where this all started. I do want to say thank you for your willingness to continue to engage with us as a city, as we've been through this, this planning process. We've come a long way from the multiple alternatives down to sort of the plan. Lot of robust conversation about what projects actually look like, as opposed to things that still feel a little bit out of our control, some of that transit planning. While I appreciate that Metro said at some point, it may happen. Reality is, we've got to figure out how to get traffic moving and people moving up and down this corridor. So grateful for the engagement in that, and looking forward to the next step. So just, just a big thank you.
Councilmember Michelle?
Thank you, Council President. Barrett, thank you so much for the presentation. And April, thank you, too. I can see that you used a lot of your skills and values here from Kent, and put them into the outreach work that you are doing now. So thank you. You mentioned something about 167 and connecting to Highway 18. Aren't there already ramps that do that?
And I'll look at it, because I'm not very direction-oriented. I'll blame being a planner and not an engineer. But technically, there are not, there's two missing ramps. So when you technically, when you go freeway to freeway, you go just straight. Two of the on-ramps, you have to go local streets first. And so that includes local traffic, quite a bit of confusion as you're going through. And so, let me find the directions, because I can't see.
Going southbound?
Headed southbound, you come off the freeway.
Oh, yeah.
Down, go back this way to get back.
Okay. But going the other way.
From like the super mall.
Eastbound on 18, if you want to go southbound on 167, you have to exit, use a couple of local streets.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Get on at the on-ramp and get.
Okay, yeah. And then it's also the northbound to westbound. And the rebuild is the west, is rebuild westbound to southbound. Right now, that ramp is just really tight. It's almost a teardrop. It's not really even a circle. And freight has identified that as a, as a critical issue. They have a hard time navigating that. And this is a heavy freight corridor, as is 18. Another piece of that that I didn't mention is an auxiliary lane on 18 that goes all the way to 164. There's no sense in rebuilding it and then getting stuck. And so there's that auxiliary lane to try to keep it moving. One of the big pieces of practical solutions, as well as as we were looking at this, it was important that as we addressed issues on 167, that we just didn't move the bottleneck. It wasn't going to do any benefit. So we did a lot of work with 512 down the, in Puyallup, as well as 18, trying to make sure that we weren't creating an issue down the line that we also needed to solve.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
I can get a drawing for it. I needed a drawing from the consultant, too.
Councilmember Fitcher?
Thank you very much. I will just second that. I see that those skills you picked up here in Kent, we're just going to take all the credit. But I did, I appreciated, one, the entire presentation, but especially seeing that it's still being inclusive, you're still working at making sure that people are included of all groups. And glad to see the greenhouse, greenhouse gas emissions are on there, because that's important. You know, we still have the cars, so the idea of cleaning up where we can to help us look into the future is important. So thank you.
Absolutely. And to add some depth to that environmental, it's just not greenhouse. It's also things like the tires. There's a lot of aspects on environmental, and that was one of the standalone goals. One of the challenges when doing this kind of work is that there's a lot of goals, and balancing them can be really hard, and extremely challenging. But we set out with the intent to try to move the needle on all of them.
You have a question, guys? Hey, excellent job. Thank you very much, and thanks for coming.
Thank you, ma'am.
Talk to you soon. Thanks, April. Okay, we are adjourned.